All right, I can like to call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for attending tonight. I'll get right into the agenda and our first item is a budget presentation. I'll turn it over to Kathy Mayer. And I'll move out of the way.
Good evening, everyone, tonight I will present the 2025-26 proposed Glover'sville School District budget. I'm not gonna read every single number, I'm just gonna kinda give an overview and, you know, I hate it when people read every single word on a slide, it's so annoying. So, the total budget of seventy-eight million, oh sixty-three, oh seventy-six is an increase from last year of two million, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars, or three point nine-two percent. I will provide more detailed information on those increases in a moment. So as you can see, I, I broke down the account codes, what we had last year, what we have this year proposed, and the change. So the general support codes are those that provide administrative services such as B and G, legal, property and student accident insurance, the Board of Education codes, et cetera. The increase represents additional fees for maintenance contracts, the salary for the central copy room attendant, legal fees, and property insurance costs. Property insurance increased significantly this year due to natural disasters throughout the nation, which resulted in major claims that affect all aspects of the insurance industry. General teaching codes are those that directly affect the scholars, teaching, special education, library, media, athletics, et cetera. These increases are due to salary increases amongst the various bargaining units, the obligation of fifty percent of the crossing guards, eleven additional career tech students cost to upgrade to the new addition of the C K L A reading program, increased P tech tuition costs, and additional B O C service costs for the distance learning program. Transportation costs are up slightly due to salary increases, and we did budget a little bit more for contract transportation as we have a lot of McKinney-Vento students that are, uh, we just don't have this, the drivers in attendance to do that, so we have to contract that out. Uh, we are still analyzing the total cost of transportation as this is the first year transporting our scholars in over ten years. Fringe benefits are down because negotiations money was included in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget that is not needed in twenty-five, twenty-six. Also, the Fulmer Health Trust held premium increases to six percent, which is significant with the number of health plans the district has. Debt service figures are provided by our fiscal advisors and have decreased slightly. Here's the proposed revenue, again, I broke it down by category, last year, proposed, and the change. The tax cap is one point seven-seven percent, which represents two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollar increase to the tax levy. The state budget still has not been passed, but Governor Hokel's proposed figures have been used for state aid. Transfer from debt service is also provided by our fiscal advisors and represents the local share of debt service that is transferred from a reserve that is specifically for this purpose. Other revenue represents interest income, property rental, utility taxes, Medicaid reimbursement, to name a few. Interest income was projected at approximately one hundred thousand dollar increase over last year due to the amazing interest rates that we have been experiencing, experiencing over the past two years. This is still a conservative number as anything can happen. Fund balance is projected to be an increase of just over nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but based on state aid and conservative spending over the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, this entire amount may not be needed. The Board of Education reviews fund balance use to help alleviate the burden to taxpayers. If there were no fund balance to use, the tax levy would need to be raised to cover the difference between revenue and expenditures. This I will kind of read. We have an election of board members, there are three Board of Education vacancies for terms of three years each commencing July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-eight. The Glover'sville Public Library has four trustee vacancies for terms of five years each commencing July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty thirty. Petitions are available in the business office or the Glover'sville Public Library, weekdays between seven-thirty a.m. and three-thirty p.m., and require signatures of one hundred qualified voters within the district. Petitions are due to the election clerk no later than April thirtieth, that should say five p.m., located at two thirty-four Lincoln Street in Glover'sville, which is the business office. So if anyone's interested in running for the board, um, please pick up a petition. I'll also put them on the website, so they're available there as well. Propositions, uh, we will also be casting ballots for the following propositions. The twenty-twenty-five Glover'sville School District budget, the purchase of two wheelchair buses, one suburban and one dump truck from the School Bus and Vehicle Capital Reserve Fund, the purchase of computer monitors, charging stations, and upgrades to the infrastructure from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund, the purchase of musical instruments and classroom furniture from the Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, and approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six Glover'sville Public Library budget. Um, this is just a reminder that, um, the budget vote propositions and election of Board of Education members and the Glover'sville Library trustees will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, between the hours of eleven and eight at the Glover'sville High School Gym and the Bleeker Town Hop. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. And there's my number and my contact information. This is the first year that the Glover'sville Public Library's information will be on our ballot. They will have their budget and their trustees on there, as well as all of the other information that I talked about today. If you have questions about the library budget or their trustees, you can contact the public library. I don't have their number right now, but, um, we're, well, I'm also gonna put that on the website. We're gonna have a separate budget, um, tab that Osama's gonna put up. So we'll have a lot of the information on there for you. All right, does anyone have any questions? I know that was a lot of stuff.
Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone here for public comment, does he? We'll move on to board discussion. Uh, we have the minutes from the March third meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments on those? Motion to approve those minutes by John, seconded by Sharon. All in favor? Yeah, Heath had his hand up. Anybody have anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, move on to the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good evening, everybody. Nice job, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just know the budget's in good hands. You know, I think everybody can understand why you see the costs going up related to, um, staffing or the teaching or what you have under teaching, I think. To be competitive, we, we're obviously, uh, there's a contract on the, on the agenda tonight, and the district's obviously, uh, doing all we can to be competitive regionally across all bargaining units. It's important we do it, otherwise, uh, this seems to be less and less people going into the profession regardless of the positions. So it's important that, uh, we have an attractive package for potential employees, so. Couple of things I wanted to talk about before I get into the agenda. Obviously, I always like recognizing, uh, those who donate and those who are retiring. Uh, tonight we have a donation of two thousand dollars from Derek and Margaret Brown to be used for our backpack program. Very generous donation. We also have a thousand dollars from the William, uh, Gun, Gundry-Broughton Charitable Private Foundation to be used for the backpack, uh, program. So again, three thousand dollars for a program that helps our scholars on the elementary level, really start off the school year with as much as they need to be successful, so. Once again, thank you to, uh, very generous community that, uh, never ceases to impress. Um, very happy to mention that we have a lot of great teachers receiving tenure tonight, and I would like to read their names, congratulate them. Um, I don't think most of them are here, when I met with all of them, I told them, you don't need to be here, you're welcome to come if you want, but you don't have to. But I really would like to mention it, cause, uh, really impressive group of people and all positive and, and promise to be great assets, continue to be great assets to the district, so. Congratulations to the following people. Danielle Bombard, T A, April Jasabowski, T A, Brittany Burgraff, uh, High School Counselor, Melanie Weaver, Special Ed, Haley Atherton, Elementary Teacher, Olivia Roberts, Elementary Teacher, Greg Holzauer, Elementary Teacher, Danielle Zublecki, Elementary Teacher, Kristen Cummins, um, Elementary Teacher, Laura Ethan Alstein, Middle School Special Education, Christine Strijak, uh, Elementary Teacher, Carol Healy, uh, Teaching Assistant, and Allison DeBrae, Special Education Teacher. So, congratulations to all those individuals who received a tenure tonight. I also wanted to point out, we have a lot of great new hires on tonight's agenda, and one of them's here with us tonight. Shannon Argersinger's joined us, she's going to be a, uh, speech teacher for Glover'sville. Welcome aboard, Shannon. We've also had success, uh, we have, uh, two music teachers, both choral and instrumental on the agenda tonight. Physical education teacher, a secondary math teacher, and assistant director of Student Support Services joined us, uh, as a result of tonight's agendas. We look forward to contributions of all those folks. Couple retirements of some long-serving individuals. John Savage, music teacher Glover'sville High School, uh, effective seven-one-twenty-five after thirty years of service. Todd Stoller, elementary teacher Glover'sville Middle School after thirty-two years of service. And Mr. Robert Williams, head custodian Glover'sville Middle School after thirty-eight years of service, so. Tip our hats to those gentlemen, wish them a long, healthy, happy retirement. And I would be remiss to not point out that Mr. Cody Hedwell is receiving tenures as principal tonight, too. One last piece also is, uh, Mrs. Christine Elias is on the agenda as a resignation and an appointment. We're glad that second piece is in there. Uh, she'll be leaving her role as high school principal and accepting a role as a secondary curriculum director. Uh, I think in her career, it's a good time to make that move. She has a lot to offer in the realm of curriculum leadership and to free her up to pursue that at secondary level. Uh, we expect great things out of her, she's already been doing a lot of it already with Mr. Chacchio in the district, so. We look forward to Mrs. Elias in her new role, and she has done an outstanding job in her role as high school principal. A few other things, just wanna point out, grant opportu, we have a grant opportunity. Chris and I will be meeting with Catholic charities later this month and Diane Mott from the Loft to discuss a new grant that's put out there called the Youth Safe Spaces Grant. It's for five hundred thousand dollars annual for fi, three to five years for, uh, communities to ser, targeting twelve to twenty-four-year-olds in need of S E L, mental health services, and obviously safe spaces for young people. So, uh, we think the Loft is a good partner for that, they're already doing great work in that regard. Uh, but we think we can expand upon what we're offering and hopefully reach far more people. Pretty exciting, uh, you never know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Let's hope that, uh, we can put together a good proposal that makes it hard for the decision-makers to deny us. Any questions on that? I wanna give a shout out to the Glover'sville Education Foundation Staff Appreciation Gala, which is scheduled for April twenty-sixth at the, uh, Centric Club, thank you. Staff appreciation, the foundation wants to put this on, a ball to recognize the employees of the district. I encourage people to, to, uh, come on out and, uh, have a, a night. Uh, it's obviously in a, it's on a school property, so they can dance the night away and have fun, adults like to have fun. Encourage everybody to come. Uh, the deadline for tickets is April twenty-first, hopefully we get enough people to make, uh, it a endeavor worth pursuing. Certainly encourage staff to sign up and come on out and have fun together.
How formal is the event, I just said formal on the, uh, I can't wear like jean shorts and, uh, tank top?
Yeah, I think, uh, kinda, I, I think somewhere along the way the word prom was used, uh, but I think more it's cocktail attire. I don't think you need to get a prom dress or cummerbunds. Just somewhat, nah. Uh, just wanted to let you know that there was a, uh, computer testing glitch today across New York State. Not every school was impacted, but many schools were impacted. There's an, there's an organization called N W E A that handles the computer-based testing for New York State Education Department. The issue was on their end, um, and they are promising us that tomorrow, uh, all systems are returned to normal and operating at full capacity, so. Take that to the bank, I guess. Uh, let's hope that our, we did have a number of impacted scholars across our district, especially at Boulevard, I believe. I know Mrs. Fago's class wasn't so impacted, but I was told that was one of the few that it worked for. But I think Cody's building, uh, they're able to, for the most part, finish the test? Okay, good. So I think our, our Boulevard scholars will jump on tomorrow and hopefully put this behind us. So I guess when you, you know, the beauty of computer-based testing is that there's things out of your control. You know, when you're filling out a bubble sheet, for the most part, if it doesn't work, it's on us. This one, we can blame some acronym for messing it up. I don't know what happened, so a lot of emails today talking about it, quarantining computers and things that we're like, wait, what? We'll see what happens, hopefully, hopefully we're good to go tomorrow. And, uh, last one, at least, in your packet, you have a NICET regionalization initiative. Tomorrow night, we have the, uh, regional meeting for the H F M B O Cs, and some of this stuff Dr. Zisk will be talking about, but prior to that meeting, all the superintendents of our region will be talking about the, uh, regionalization initiative that New York State Education Department rolled out last summer. This has kind of faded from the headlines in recent months because, uh, some states in Long Island pushed back and it stayed, blinked frankly, and, and became optional. But, you know, we work well as a region in this part of the state. Uh, our B O Cs, I would say, works well together, and if you look at this document, you can see the areas that we're focusing on, academic domain, social, cultural, and capacity. Some of the, on page two, you'll see some of the instructional priorities, science of learning, um, multi-tiered systems of support, the M T S S, which Glover'sville receives a grant, and, uh, we've done a lot of great work over the last few years with that. And also the work towards, uh, implementing what a portrait of a graduate's gonna be with the changing graduation requirements for students. Regional operational priorities, community schools, resources, regional transportation study cooperation, obviously with the initiative on electrification that has not gone away yet. I, we assume it's going to, we think it will, but we've been moving along those lines trying to study, uh, our ability to meet the demands of, frankly, what's current law, um, come twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, but we do expect there's going to be a change at the state level, and we will not be required to buy all electric buses come twenty-twenty-seven. But as of right now, come twenty-twenty-seven, we are required to purchase electric buses, and frankly, the grid is not there to support them. So it's gotta change. Not to mention the cost to taxpayers is three times the current cost of a bus. And if they're expecting to put that on local taxpayers to vote on, I don't think Glover'sville's gonna be the only district that's gonna have a hard time stomaching that. Any questions on, uh, the regionalization initiatives? I know Sharon and Rob, you guys both coming tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, as promised as always, it'll be a good evening, look forward to seeing you. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
All right, thank you. No questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is the student board member report.
All right, well, overall, the school is, everything's going pretty good. Um, we're the fourth quarter now, we're in the long lull. Um, I like to call it the death valley of the year, the five weeks from regents week to spring break, it feels like an eternity. But we're almost done, we got a week left. Um, spring sports have started, which is always a great thing to hear, and we're in our swim unit in gym. So, take that as you will. Some things that I do wanna highlight at G H S, on Friday, April eleventh, we are having our carnival, which is a great positive reinforcement thing that we do every year. Um, we've got bounce houses, we've got food vendors, there's tons of different activities, there's arcade games, prizes, everything like that that we'd have there. Um, that's a great way to keep kids coming to school. I think it's what, it's two, you can miss two days, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Two days for the last five weeks?
Yes.
There we go, two days for the last five weeks, and, um, otherwise, you know, then you wouldn't be invited to the carnival, but it is, it's a great event and it definitely keeps kids in school, and I'm very happy that our school has that. Um, a few weeks ago, our U Albany courses, two hundred and two oh one, went to U Albany for our, for the Spanish day. It was a great day, we were invited, the kids had the opportunity to speak to native speakers. Um, I went on that day, it was a great day. Um, everything went smoothly, we learned a lot, spoke a lot of Spanish, and, uh, had a pretty good time. So I also do have a little presentation prepared about, um, about the student parking lot.
Is that a private device?
It is.
Probably to access the better photos and.
That is true, that is true, I needed it. I needed an S D card reader, so.
I don't see any stickers on that.
There is, there are none. Here we go. Oh, oh, I've gotta extend, oh, come on. Hold up, hold up, this wouldn't happen on a Chromebook.
Yeah, right.
This has gotta work. No? All right, hold up, let me just end this, I'm sorry, guys. I'll get extended screen, what is that, that's, uh? It's fullscreen. It's, uh, fixed and screen, it's one of the two. Well, guys, the economy is doing pretty good, maybe, I don't know, weather's nice.
Where, not here?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we like snow.
Uh, right, uh? Extended displays, duplicate the displays, hold up, we are in. There we go, okay. We're here to talk about the student parking lot. There we go, finally, okay, um, this is our student parking lot. It looks like a parking lot. However, there is an intersection. This intersection is ta, please don't. Or it's a great, it's a great intersection.
But I will agree, the intersection is terrible, because I knew that was coming out of your mouth.
Well, I'm not actually sure what to do now.
Preston, do you want, do you want my computer?
I don't know why this is actually being so weird. I think it's cause it thinks I'm, it's, it's like a, on a duplicate. This intersection is, is actually really terrible, in all seriousness, though. Um, so I'm just gonna go over here, I don't know. Uh, so over here, right, we have, we've got oncoming traffic leaving the parking lot, oh, please. Oh, this is so bad.
I love this on my social media tomorrow.
Uh, this is, everybody, this is like, all day I'm gonna hear about this tomorrow, and I'm sure my mom is watching right now at home, banging her head against her phone. Extend the displays. There we go. Oh, you guys can see my screen, right? We're gonna keep these changes. All right, this should be fine. All right, Ms. Elias is on there now, it looks like.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted my computer.
I might have to borrow it in ten seconds. Okay, so this is terrible. So this is a line of students, uh, leaving the student parking lot, right? And then over here, we've got people who are making a right-hand turn, no, left-hand turn out of here, I don't visualize it right. Left-hand turn out of here, right-hand turn out of here, and here's the traffic coming down the hill. In the morning, it's perfectly fine, right? We've got a stop sign here, there's a stop sign here. But at the end of the day, with kids crossing the street, it is stop-start traffic, non-stop. Right, we've got kids coming, there's a car coming here, a car coming here, so the traffic becomes backed up. Now, it took me a minute to get the drone up because I had to get the clearance and everything that I needed before I could take off. But, um, normally, there's a third line that comes in right here, which causes another stop-start-go type situation where another lane has to merge in here, which takes even more time. So as you're waiting here, you've got students that are crossing the crosswalk, cars coming through, cars coming down this way, and it takes roughly like, I'd say probably ten to fifteen minutes on a Friday to get out of this parking lot, which is insane.
Should leave five minutes early.
Exactly.
Why does everyone want to leave school in the first place?
That's what I'm saying, overnight, just sleeping bag, we're fine. Um, if you're just coming back tomorrow, right? So, um, what I would propose is speaking to a civil engineer, getting a traffic light, that we could keep on a flashing red coming, um, a flashing red coming down the hill and a flashing, flashing red leaving the parking lot. But at two-thirty, at two-thirty-five, we could switch it to a red and green situation where we could empty out the student parking lot and then empty out this line here, right here. So it wouldn't be as much stop-start, stop-start traffic, because that's what's taking the most time. And the other problem that we're experiencing with the student parking lot is, over the summer with the capital project, they shifted it with a new drop-off loop, and we got new parking spots, but the old parking spots are still there. So we essentially have an old parking lot on top of a new parking lot. So whoever decides where to park, they kind of determine where everybody else is gonna park for the rest of the day. Is it a white day or a yellow day? So, it, whoever parks first determines what kind of day we're having. And, uh, that's.
You gotta get there early.
That's about it, yeah, I mean, this is just a few cars lined up, I think.
I hope you're doing a good job, bro.
I think, yeah, you can see me right there in my trunk. Uh, right there, flying the drone, checking the shots, but yeah, this is just another view of the parking lot. Um, once again, right here, this line usually is backed up all the way to about here. But by the time I was taking this, it was like two-fifty.
So, and a lot of those cars, uh, are also parents picking children up, not just the twenty-five cars of students that are parked. It's people who are picking their children up, it's, yeah, not just, no, it's not just the kids, it's also people picking their children up.
Yes, and I would, I would feel pretty confident making the statement that if we had that traffic light, this line right here wouldn't be as long, so that would eliminate the line of traffic here. Because people try to get into this line as a shortcut to avoid doing the long thing, but if anything, that makes everybody longer because it has to do the stop-start. So if this line was fixed and we get everybody out faster, this line would be eliminated as well. Problem solved, so.
Yeah, I was just saying, what if you guys, what if you got rid of the sidewalk on the right? Or curb stops and made people walk around the outside of the parking lot? Completely get rid of the sidewalk going down entirely, made walking on the side.
On the left, or on the right?
The left, they kept the sidewalk on the left, maybe walk around there, around the loop, then go down and get rid of that right parking lot completely, curb-stopped it.
So they're not crossing in front of traffic, you mean?
No more crossing, no more kids, no more traffic, no more foot traffic, get rid of it.
And you have all the middle school kids have to walk all the way on that way?
Right.
Oh, middle school kids, yeah.
I think even without the sidewalk, people would still walk.
They're gonna take the shortest distance.
Preston, I, I'm C S R, I'm going to make sure they see this presentation, and, uh, we have a long standardization of our engineers long before I got here, so I think.
Yeah, of course, yeah, this is, this is a diff, this is an issue that I don't think even we can solve.
Take their access road to the back parking lot, just run down the street.
There's, yeah, there's like a lot of acts, like even just like, just bumper, bumper stuff.
Sometimes I wonder if, right, I mean, we don't wanna encourage that right now, Rob, but if we ever paved that and made that an egress out of that back lot, that may be an option. Right now, there's no, there was a huge hill there, it's a, it's a B and G, uh, access road, it's not paved. I don't wanna encourage kids to be using that at home.
I mean, and right now, it's.
Maybe if we would, uh, the guardrails and some civil engineering thought, we could, we can do something better. Overall, I'm happy with the, the design that we changed from the high school, but I don't disagree with you. I come in and out every day, picking up our own and, um, begin a school year, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
But even in the afternoon, with, uh, I don't, I'm not there for the most part, so I don't see what you're talking about, but that's not the only bottleneck we have on this property in the afternoon.
Of course.
So at after-school, are people trying to make the left to go towards the high school, or is everybody just going down there?
Yeah, so, yeah, so right now, at the end of the day, everybody's trying to make this turn.
So nobody's going the other way, though?
There are a few, not many. Yeah, there's a few, there's a few kids.
Stop the left turns during that time, I mean. What's the biggest issue, is the kids crossing, so that when the car goes straight, the people who wanted, who was, then it would be normally be their turn, they're blocked by kids crossing?
So, shit.
I just wonder if you put a crossing guard there and help kids up who are walking. Go ahead, Christina.
Yeah, okay, so I think it's a combination of both. You have the safety aspect, certainly the crossing guard would support student walking safety, but the biggest issue is they'll hit, uh, finally get an opportunity to pull out, and then you have kids in the crosswalk. So yes, if we had the stopping guard there, the crosswalk guard there, that would stop that. But what he's mentioning, I think would kind of, I don't know, like if you get a traffic light there, but I'm saying that is something that he's suggesting, would, you could also put it on there so the kids could get a flasher. You, you're walking now, you're walking now, and then they would get trained to wait. If it's not saying we walk, we wait so that they can get out. Uh, we have had kids almost hit by cars on foot and a few fender vendors, um, this year alone, pulling out. So that is the, it's a two-pronged problem. The walkers and the kids trying to get out, cause obviously they give him age, they're teenage drivers, right? So they're like, now's my chance, and it's really not their chance, yeah.
David, I've seen, I've seen other cafeterias just as change. Yeah, no, I don't disagree. Honestly, it's, it's, I've looked at it for seven years and it's like, I'm not a civil engineer.
You see, and then right here, this car, normally there's a longer line, but now this car's gonna try to shove himself in right here, and that car's not gonna let him go, this car might feel nice today, I think they're gonna let him in. But they don't wanna let him in, and then down here, we've got that stop-start, that car's going. This car's probably gonna hold off, that car doesn't wanna go because there's somebody waiting there.
And now those kids in the car.
They're waiting, and now those kids are there.
You got somebody waiting to turn into the parking lot?
And it's tough, yeah, they're trying to get in, cause they wanna pick up their kid.
And they don't have a stop sign coming up.
No, coming up does not have one.
No.
But obviously, pedestrian always has a right-way, but, yeah, you can see that it's.
You should just get a bridge.
How about a roundabout?
Oh, my gosh, put those teenagers.
I was gonna go for the walkway, but that would probably be the fastest way, but because of the walk, because of the crosswalk, you're like, you go around the lot.
Build a tunnel underneath it, or a machine tunnel?
Really, um, but yeah, I think those are just really the main problems with the student parking lot, and it's, the other thing is kids really like to see their window, and I see this all the time, they see the smallest window, and they'll go from like zero to twenty and just blast through, and it, it's bad. It gets real dangerous. I mean, uh, this video is a pretty calm time, by the time I filmed this, I don't know if there's a timestamp on it, but it was, it was pretty late. was pretty late.
Yeah, now, Preston, you're 100% right. I go down the hill every day after school with my son and it's just, everybody's trying to find their edge to get out and get in and it's definitely challenging.
I think in the short, in the short term for pedestrian safety, if we assign person, give them a best, stop sign, stop and slow sign, we could certainly at least, in short term, cut down on the possibility of pedestrians being hit and also hopefully have kids maybe gather where those three are now for a minute and then stop traffic coming and going and let the kids cross and match, go back to traffic moving. I think for the most part, like you said, 10 minutes could probably be shaved in half with a little bit of cooperation and patience and somebody, a staff member overseeing that piece.
Because my initial thought was we just detract, the traffic light and then just like a walk wait thing, but kids wouldn't listen to that.
I think, I think right now, without having a bridge or a tunnel to get the pedestrians across, you're going to need a staff member or directing traffic.
And the traffic light would also obviously stop the stop-start at the intersection as well. And that's about it. And then the only other thing traffic-wise, as we were just talking about that, is the signage at Glover'sville, a lot of my friends that come from other schools or people that come from other schools for sporting events, whether it's a play or something like that, it's hard to know where you're going without the layout. There's not many signs at middle school this way, high school this way and things like that because we have such a large campus. So even if we're already speaking to a civil engineer, we're getting signs and everything sound like that, if we could add in external signs and say, okay, well, this is the high school, this is where our gym is. I, I know we do have some of that stuff outside, but even just larger parking signs coming up the hill that the middle schools continue that way or the high school.
Even aerial map of the, of the campus with clear labels of what is what.[1701.12]